Good evening. Welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. My name is Tim Carter. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for joining us. If you're here this evening, you have the opportunity to participate in public forum that says 2324, and you can start making some comparisons. Some of the numbers are based upon how many students we have per pupil allotment, and some of these numbers are based on how much we spend in certain categories. So the BOSI aid, we get aid on how much we spend, and we get money back on that. So the more we spend, the more we use the BOSI services, the more money we get back from that and state aid. But some are just based on how many kids we have and our per pupil estimate or ratio. Thank you.
Yeah. So when you talk about revenue for the school district, the two biggest categories are our aid and then the taxes that we collect. So I've given you as much as I can on the aid at this point. So I did do the tax cap calculation, the last page of your handout. And this will, of course, go on our website, and anybody at home can ask any questions about this. But I wanted to go over it with board members. Maybe we'll talk about it, some of the terms, so you can be familiar with them. You always start with the tax base for this year, which is the 12, 689, 987. That's our tax levy from the previous year and this year. We held it the same. Then there's this tax base growth factor of 1.0078. So that's based on the quantity change in your community. That can be new construction. That can be newly taxable status of existing property, measurable improvements to taxable property. So that number is up for us. I looked at the last, like, five years. We typically be around 1.0043. We've been at 1.0036. So that is an increase for us, which is, you can see, if you look at the two columns compared side to side, since we're using the same tax number, you can see that that creates about a $40,000 increase in the amount of taxes we can raise. So, you know, that number is significant. Why is it up higher? Could it be, you know, new property being built, new construction, some property changing from not taxable to taxable? We know of one big property in the community that that happened to, so it could be because of that. So we'll take that number, and we'll take that increase in ability to raise taxes. You can see our pilots. Your pilots come in and out. Our pilots stay relatively the same. They have gone down. We used to have about four or five pilots. We're down to two. So the more consistent that number is, the better for your calculation, because then it's not fluctuating from year to year. The allowable levy growth factor is at 2% this year. That is a term that I'm sure you get questions on as board members. The 2%, the 2%, taxes can't increase more than 2%. Well, it's a formula. You can always tell people. It is 2% this year because inflation is higher than 2%. So the actual number you're allowed to use there is inflation or 2%, whichever is lower. So obviously, we all know that 2% is much lower than inflation right now. So that is the number that we are using again, just like last year. And then the pilots come out. And so our tax levy, tax cap limit this year is 2.78%. So that's the maximum that the board can choose to use as a levy when we do the school budget, but that's the maximum. So I will meet with the Finance Committee in February, and we'll talk about what they want me to use in presentations going forward. And as we develop the budget, you know, I'm sure the board, as a board, you'll see what we need, right? I mean, we don't say right now it's going to be XYZ. We kind of have to develop this budget and see what the district needs. But that is your maximum allowed amount for the 2324 budget. So sometimes, at this meeting, too, I talk a little bit about expenditures that I might know of at the time. And we always start with salaries. I do have all the contracts in place for next year. We're only negotiating two individual contracts, so all the big units have set salary schedules for next year. So I have done what's called the rollover budget, and that means everything stays the same, except I put the salary numbers where they need to be to meet our contractual obligations. So that increase for next year is $260,000. So that's something to just keep in mind. Obviously, we need the money to cover those salary changes, and we will have other changes. As you know, we negotiated the bus contract for next year to be at the CPI number, so it's a one-year extension. So that's a 6% increase in the transportation costs for next year. The Health Consortium met this week, and we set the rates for next year to be a 5% increase on the premiums. So, you know, that's another increase we have to cover. So when I delineate all this in February, I'll put it out onto a PowerPoint for you. So you'll see the expenditures in these big groups. We call them functions. So salaries, benefits, contractual, transportation, debt. And I'll show you what we expect in the new budget compared to this past year. Sometimes we even do one year also prior to look at. But we will get all those numbers out there for you to see and ask questions about. TRS is, that's our teachers' retirement that we have to contribute to. That is expected to go down a little, the percentage that we pay. The ERS, that's the other staff, clerical labor staff, that rate is expected to increase for Tier 4 people and increase for the Tier 6 people as well. So we have one going down, one going up. And talking about transportation, I haven't done anything with our BOSI's numbers yet. I meet with them February 9. And I think that is everything I can tell you right now. Do you have any questions for me?
Carolyn, I do. The difference, I have two different pages here. The one is the executive budget, the other one is the aides payable. I think this is first time we've seen this, that you've done this, isn't it? That you showed the aides payable?
This is the state aid from the legislative budget?
Well, you have, the first one is the combined, the executive budget combined. On the next page, and I'm wondering, why, sir, what's the difference between the two?
The first one is the executive budget. They come up with theirs. That's usually done by now. We would have that. And then after that executive budget, the legislator themselves goes and creates their budget, creates what both houses actually do it separately. And then they create the one house, and then that's released. And then the governor's office and the legislative both houses create the final, here's what your state is. The second page that you have here is what that final budget, that was actually what we ended up with. The first one is the executive budget. The second one is what the final was, and those were both the news and notes last year.
Okay. I'm curious, as far as the 2223 estimated aids, there's a $20,000 difference in the total state aid. I was wondering why there's a difference between the executive budget proposal and that there?
Well, because the legislature meets and things change, plus there's also getting new information on Wilson based on our prior year expenditures.
Okay, is that what it is, based on prior year's expenditures?
Some of it, the ones that are based on expenditures, like the transportation, the hardware, software, the BOSIs, things like that are based on numbers, whether it's enrollment numbers or the amount of money we spend. So, yeah, it can be a lot different. I mean, $20,000 isn't much different at all, but it can be.
If you take a look at the software library and textbooks, the executive budget was $85,500. The final budget that the governor's office, along with legislator, put together, and they gave us $83,495. And the same thing was with operating every one of the categories is slightly either lower or higher. There was a couple of them higher, but in the end, the difference was $20,000. Some districts had a huge difference between those two budgets.
And sometimes, we will use these numbers exactly as they are to budget. And sometimes, I'm going to tell you that I don't have full confidence in that number, and I'm going to tell you that I'm going to use a different number, but I'll explain why. You know, like, yeah, sometimes the building one, they might not have a project that I know the final cost report's going to go in, or the transportation sometimes is off because it's based on budget, and maybe the realistic numbers aren't quite as high as that budget, so I don't want to over-budget that revenue category. So sometimes I modify those a little bit, but...
And trustees, those of you that are new, this time is going to go so fast. You're looking at February and March, and April 11th, there's the formal vote on the budget. So all this information that Carolyn's going to be sending to you and talking about at the February and March board meetings or workshop meetings, it's important to ask questions. If you're getting stuff and you don't know what it is, set up time, stop by. Carolyn doesn't mind having that conversation. I could try explaining as best as possible. President Waters certainly has done a few budgets in his time. We would do our best to make sure that when you get to that meeting on April 11th, you're voting on something you really have a good handle on. And there's always going to be questions and changes along the way, and you could be doing this for years, and something pops up. But are there any other questions for Mrs. Oliveri?
Is this the final year of the COVID money, the rescue plan?
No. Well, this year that we're in right now is the final money for SIRS, what they call, and then next year is our final year, except we do have summer to use some of it, too. But it has to be done by September of that following year, yeah. So then, while we're doing the budget the following year, there will be no COVID money. And some of those staff members that we pay under COVID money, you know, will have to be making some decisions, decisions on.
And we'll be making decisions between now and the time the budget is finalized, too. We do have, as we've already had one retirement, we have two on the docket for today. Every time there's a retirement, we take a look at numbers, trends, and Carolyn and I, with the building principals, and we bring that to the board to make an informed decision on whether or not we replace that position, use that resource in another area where we may have, you know, we may be funding one of the grand positions, or we may replace it depending on the particular position. So right now, we know of three retirements. There's always rumors of more. We'll see it. February 1st is the deadline for retirements from both associations, all associations. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Oliveri. I'll save the soapbox for another day. Superintendent Carter?
Thank you, board members. You should have in front of you two policies. One's red and blue, entitled remote instruction, and the other one is field trips. If you don't, I have an extra remote instruction. Does everybody have two? Okay, the remote instruction is not a new policy. If you remember, at the beginning of COVID, we had to put this in place, the use of remote learning in the district, and they've changed it to remote instruction. And I'm going to tell you, the biggest change has to do with that paragraph on extraordinary circumstances that you were allowed to use remote instruction, and they're letting you use it a little bit more freely. However, in order for us to be able to use it, this year is the last year, the pilot year. That's why this is in place. In order to use it going forward, you have to have a plan put in place and filed with the state on how you're going to use remote instruction. Now, since we've come back from COVID, we haven't used remote instruction for very many reasons. We do have a couple of snow days built into our existing calendar. However, I've told the administrators, our teaching staff, our non-teaching staff, and students, families, in the case of we're down to our last snow day, I would use remote instruction as a possibility. But as we already know with Niagara County weather, and specifically in Wilson, you could be five miles away and have 10 inches of snow, and you could be in Wilson, and there's green grass. So it's never an easy, easy call. But I think it's important for us to keep this remote instruction in place just in case. And I plan on moving forward and getting a plan in place that basically says that. We're still going to have our snow days. We're going to use our snow days. But if we're in jeopardy of getting to that 180, under that 180, which is what we need for state aid, if we go below 180 student days, teaching days with students in the building, we lose state aid every day for that day. So if we had to fall below that, I would deploy either the asynchronous or the synchronous instruction. It is not ideal. I think COVID proved the fact that it is not ideal. I don't want to use that as a main instruction. But at the same token, in lieu of losing aid money, I would rather have that in place. I've also told, it is a difficult decision because I have to predict ahead of time. Going to be able to have all the students take their technology home, make sure they're charged up, things like that. Are pre-K to 3. They don't have theirs in their book bags anymore, taking them back and forth, so we'd have to find alternative instruction for them also. But board members, that is, you can see the definitions. You've had this in your board packet, and it really just takes this from being an emergency type of to allowing school districts to employ the use of remote instruction if they need to. Any questions, board members, on this policy? And it will be updated in 2023. It says 2022 at the top. The second one, I could tell you, board members, this was a month in the making, the field trip, because our current, I didn't even bring it, because our current field trip policy was four paragraphs. And it was the four paragraphs at the top of this page. And it did not, we had a faculty member early in the school year request to move forward with an overnight field trip going to Quebec. So the first thing I do is I go to the policy manual and see, what does it say? And what's that process? And there was no mention of any kind of field trip. So Mrs. Pavon did some searching for me, and I took it to the shared decision-making team, and you'll see that there's no markup, because this is totally brand-new. It would have been all red or all blue, so this is totally brand-new. The first four paragraphs, if you saw it, it basically says that, you know, as a district, we believe that field trips are part of the educational process, and we encourage our staff to take field trips. The first one is day field trips, so that'd be like going to Becker Farm, going to Halkenburg Farm, taking a one-day field trip. Your class, how the approval process goes, it goes to the building principal. The building principal lets me know about it. I approve it, and I put it on, Mrs. Pavon puts it on the board for informational only. So that process hasn't changed. It just was never delineated in policy. There's some requirements under transportation, means of transportation, chaperones. We decided that eight to, one adult for every eight students, up to one adult for every 10 students. So that range is what they would use to determine how many chaperones would need to go on that field trip. Permission slips will need to be turned in. The list of students need to go to the nurse, because health conditions and concerns need to be taken into considerations. And we may need to send a parent, nurse, or a trained staff member on that field trip as part of that. We talked about that last time. I have the right to cancel field trips based upon extenuating circumstances, liability. And then the last one is that the Wilson Code of Conduct applies to all district-approved field trips. So that's the day field trip. The next page, page 3 of 10, begins the overnight field trips. And this same process, approval, goes to the building principal, goes to me. And then I will review those and let, I will present the plan to the Board of Education at the next scheduled meeting for approval. My belief is, and the shared decision-making team was, if we're going to send a group of students with adults overnight somewhere, the board should approve it, not just be notified about it. And then there should be some kind of a plan. Talks about transportation, accommodations, supervision. How many chaperones? We decided that as a group of teachers, administrators, parents, the shared decision-making team thought, between one adult for every four students, one adult for every six students. So it's either one to four, one to six, somewhere in that range you would use to be able to decide how many chaperones. So if you have 20 students going on a trip, that's four or five adults that would need to go with that overnight. Again, permission form will have to be filled out for each parent. Health conditions, that list needs to go to the nurse. Health conditions need to be taken a look at, and perhaps a parent, nurse, or trained staff member would need to go along. I have the right to cancel it. Again, if it's not approved, the board's not liable for the field trip, and the district code of conduct also is applicable. And we got to the international field trips, because the one we're talking about is one of our clubs are going to, and so students are going to Quebec on an overnight field trip. Again, approval goes to the building principal, comes to me. I approve it. I send it to the board. The board approves it. Guidelines for developing a proposal. They would need to develop a proposal and make that part of the approval process to the board. There needs to be an orientation. This particular field trip is coming up, and there is an orientation. And you can see that the orientation is very specific to what needs to be discussed with the parents. Need to come in, meet with the building principal, meet with the teacher that's taking the students on the trip, and the plan needs to go forward. And the parents have the right to say, I don't want my child to go on that trip. Considerations for international travel. And again, I'm not going to read this page by page. You had this in news and notes since Friday. Implementation, the approved proposal, supervision and transportation, that's delineated. Means of transportation, the accommodations, chaperones, we stayed with that four to six range, every four students, one adult, up to one adult for every six. So again, if it's a group of 20 going, you're going to have, you know, four to five chaperones that are going with them. In this particular case, this trip is, every student is bringing a parent, so we're not have to, we're going to well exceed that chaperone maximum. Yes, permission slip. Again, health concerns need to be delineated, an evaluation of the program. And you can see that part of the valuation is that valuation of how that program needs to come to the Board of Education, either in written form, or the person supervising the trip would come talk to the board about how it went and what they learned. And again, liability, if it's not approved, we don't assume liability, and the district code of conduct applies to that field trip. It was a pretty extensive process going through this. Does the board have any questions about this policy? Sure.
One, chaperones, how do they get to the field trip, especially like any trip?
They go... I don't know how they get, I have no idea how they get to the... I mean, I've been on field trips where the parents preferred to drive, and I've been on field trips where the parents preferred not to drive. I haven't heard that as a concern, the buses are not as overloaded as they probably were. I mean, I can certainly keep that in mind, but I haven't heard of an issue with parents driving to field trips.
And the other is, especially either day or overnight.
Mm-hmm.
Are people who need CPR, like, trained?
So that's part of that health consideration, that there needs to be a parent. If there's a specific parent-student issue, there is a nurse that may be going on the field trip or a trained person. So we are in the process of making sure that all of our staff have that training. In fact, the first group is, I believe, the first week of February, our musical staff, the four advisors for the musical staff were the first to volunteer. And our safety and risk gentleman, Paul Nawaka, he is going to do the first class of non-coaches. And I think it's the 14th of February, so it'll be the four musical advisors. We're going to open up to any other club advisors and then administrators. And then after the fire inspections are done, which is April, we're going to start setting up dates for classroom teachers, aides, anybody that wants to be trained, and not just CPR, CPR, AED, because those go together, and then First Aid. And it's a partial online course. And then it also is some hands-on. So if you do the whole course in person, it's four hours. If the staff member takes the first half of the course online, then they can go an hour and a half with Paul to do the hands-on AED proficiency show. Okay, you're right on how to do it, and I'll show you how to go ahead and put that AED on. Okay? But as we are, there's nothing in policy that says they have to, but we're trying to make sure that everybody's trained, so there is somebody for every. And I'm going to tell you, the staff are coming to us saying, we want to be trained. So I don't think it's going to, it's just a matter of how many days we can get Paul here. Again, there's no cost. It's part of our BOSI service for safety and risk. Any other questions?
This may be a stupid question, but considering adult chaperone.
An adult chaperone? I don't know. We don't take kids.
I mean...
I would consider over 21, I would think. I can ask that question, and we can make that part of the admin regs. But we, I mean, we're pretty, we don't take current students as chaperones, even former students that come back and want to sub. We don't allow them to sub, like at the high school or the middle school. We let them sub at the elementary school until there's some age difference between them. Most of the, I mean, chaperones to me are the parents or our staff members, or aunt and uncle, maybe. I wouldn't want, you know, an 18-year-old chaperone to go with an 18-year-old senior. I will make a note of that.
Anything else, board members? Just for your knowledge, the superintendent and I just discussed this on Friday, and one of the examples that was given to me is if there's a student or somebody that may have a severe allergy and needs an EpiPen, that we're going to make sure that somebody that's qualified to deliver that medicine is part of that field trip, or nobody goes.
We had a little bit of that conversation, because Mr. Roth was talking about that. It has a guideline that came down to us in January, a mandate that came to us in January that sporting events, all of the, you can name, and there has to be someone that is trained in using an EpiPen, or, you know, the person can't go. So we began with the sports, everyone in the sports teams were working on that. So if there's a student with an EpiPen, regardless if it says self-administered or not, because some of our high school students and middle school students are self-administered, but if they're in the middle of anaphylactic shock... But if they're in the middle of an inflected shack, an inflected shack, the New York State Ed says they can't give their own EpiPen. Someone has to be able to be trained to be able to do it. So we're, every one of our coaches are in the process of being trained if they have a student with a severe allergy. And how we're handling field trips between now and the end of the year is, we'll first ask the parent of the student that wants to go. If they're not able to, we're going to try and meet that with our, one of our three nurses. And if one of our three nurses can't go, one of the staff members is going to have to volunteer to be trained to administer EpiPen, or that field trip's not going. So that's sort of how we're, we're, and we're going to, as the, as the year goes on, and the nurses are more have ability, because the training is pretty intense. So you can't just train everybody. We don't have time in the day to do that. So, you know, we're, we're trying to meet it as best we can. Most of the time, we can get a parent to go. And if the parent can't go, our nurse will go and we're all set. But in the event that, that can't happen, we'll make sure we have enough time to be able to offer for one of the staff members to be trained. And they have to be trained in the type of EpiPen that the student uses. This is not a general, general training. Lot going on in a very short period of time. So that's the field trip. If there are no questions, you'll see that there is a vote on those as a first, or excuse, not a vote, but a, an official first read. And it'll be voted on at our next meeting. That's everything I have for.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Anything else on policy? We love to beat that horse, don't we?
It's been a while since we've had to have a policy.
Well, you haven't lost your touch.
No. A lot of good stuff.
Under four other A-approved memorandum of agreement between the Wilson Central School District, Wilson Teachers Association, and Mr. Alan Scarpine to waive the must-have at least 20 years of service in the Wilson Central School District, provision of notice of intent to retire as it relates to Alan Scarpine's eligibility in the collective bargain agreement covering the period from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, approve the service agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Paper Education Company Incorporated to provide students in grade six through 12, teachers and administrators access to their online platform for educational use, and for students who obtain tutoring and connection with courses they are taking at a cost of $82.52 per student for a total of $44,220.0 effective December 30, 2022 to June 28, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C, approve the data privacy agreement between the Wilson Central School District and the Paper Education Company Incorporated. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under five personnel, A, accept the resignation of Alan Scarpine, technology education teacher, effective June 30, 2023 for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, accept the resignation of Teresa Lenasa, teacher aide, effective June 30, 2023 for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Was it June 30th or August 30th? My thing says August 30th.
What did I say?
But you said June 30th.
I did? I must be thinking June.
Yes.
I just wanted to double check that we had the right thing in here, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Kent.
Oh, hey, I'm right on it.
You're right on it. Do I need to reread?
I think you're good.
It's a matter of public record now. No, we're good?
Yeah.
Just for the good of the order, again, we will formally invite all retirees this year back to our June meeting for formal recognition of their service to the district. Item C, accept the resignation of Alyssa Roaring as varsity volleyball coach, effective January 13, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D, accept the resignation of Kaylee Stewart as varsity volleyball coach, effective January 13, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under six personnel appointments, A, Rachel Berkman as band, pit band director for the 2022-2023 school year, effective January 9, 2023 for the WTA agreement, paid-per-play performance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under B, Alexis Floyd and Jamie Lockwood as assistant cheerleading coaches for the 2022-2023 winter season. Position will be split at 50% each at coach's salary schedule, step two for the WT agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. There's seven policies. We've already gone over them. We, they, they will be on our next agenda for official approval. Under eight, A, approved private parochial transportation request of Mr. Michael Schroeder and Ms. Melanie Peterson for their children to Holy Ghost Lutheran School for the 2022-2023 school year. No transportation requests are granted based on the 15-mile transportation limit and available seating exists on the bus. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under nine, conference requests, A, approved conference requests, B through C for the January 24, 2023 agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under 10, A, the CSCA requests the use of high school library media center on March 11, 2023 from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM for defensive driving course. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Trustee Stewart, I will see, see you bright and early Saturday morning.
Oh, I'm so excited.
For the annual event. Not as excited as I am. Our student official is. Competing, competing this evening.
Playing basketball in Royard.
With us. Superintendent, do you have a report?
I have a very short report for you.
Good to hear.
Thank you, President Waters, and welcome. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the Wilson School community, the Wilson community. As most have already have heard, there was tragedy, tragic fire in the Wilson community in the last week or so. And the Whitmore family has been going through a lot. And I appreciate the businesses, our staff, our community, and everyone who's pitched in to do what they can to help assist this family. And it's part of the reason why it's awesome working in Wilson, because it's not just a place of work, it's a, it's, it's part family. So I do appreciate that. It's just been awesome to see the outpouring and the emails going back and forth, and the, the well wishes, and the updates on how the family's doing and things like that. So thank you officially to the, the school community and to our Wilson community. Last week, I believe Wednesday it was, many of the board members were there. And we evaluated the National Academy of Finance Financial Literacy Fair. And this year, the kids knocked it out of the park, I think. You know, there was a, a year and a half lull there of being able for them to be able to present and be able to put the program together. But this year, it was just absolutely dynamic, and the kids did an awesome job. So board members and any staff that was able to assist, it was great. We've sent all the pictures and the write-ups to our newsletter editor, and they're putting an article together. So in our upcoming newsletter, you should see the pictures and read the article on what that will look like, or what it did look like. March 17, we have a superintendent's conference day, and I know it was a little bit of a wave, but you're going to start hearing more and more information about it. So I just want to let you know, board members, that on the 17th in the morning, there will be an active shooter drill. There will be law enforcement from multiple agencies here at the high school, middle school, as part of that, as part of that drill. And staff members are going to be able to either observe or be part of the drill, or just be in the building and follow usual lockdown procedures. We're working on communication plans and how that's going to work, and working on what the drill will look like with the law enforcement. That drill, active shooter drill, was planned for March 18, 2022, or excuse me, 2020. And three days prior, we closed schools for the first closing of COVID. So we had to cancel that superintendent's conference day and that drill. So we're bringing it back. It'll involve middle school and the high school. There are no students in the building that day. Also part of that, we're bringing in a, a, a speaker to the building for social-emotional learning. He will be in the district on the 16th and the 17th. His name is Tom Cody. The staff has just begun to be introduced to him through the faculty meetings. On the 16th of March, he'll be here in district meeting with grade-level teams and students, groups of, of students in their grade levels. He'll be working with pre-K through grade two. And he's going to have some time with the older elementary students, the middle school students, and then the high school students will spend some time with them. We're going to, we're, we're in the process of putting details out about an evening program for parents, if they would like to, and anyone from the community that want to come listen to him. And we will also have some activities for the younger students to be able to keep them busy, if you would like to bring your elementary students. And then we're also working on some plans for sort of a family meal, and also a community resource fair. So we've engaged many different resources, Child and Family Services, APIC, local libraries, to come set up a table and give whatever information you can. I don't know if they're going to give away Mrs. Stewart's any freebies, but I'm sure there'll be, there should be free information for you if you want to come in and, and visit every table. So it's past the initial, it's past the initial planning stages, and we're in the gathering of information and putting the final details on the, you know, timeframes and things like that. I'm hoping that's all March 16 in the evening. And board members, that's all I have unless you have questions of me.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. I hope that everybody has time to attend on Saturday. I know some of you have prior obligations. I don't expect to hear anything new, board members, as I, and I'm sure you don't believe to hear anything new either. There'll be a lot of political posturing. Just when you don't think anything crazy will come out of Albany, it does. Our newly-elected governor is very distracted, and I'm deeply afraid that her focus is not on the children in her state and the educational priorities that her predecessors and we put forth. So I hope that there's a little bit of sanity between now and when this budget's released. As the superintendent alluded to earlier, this is a, what seems like a long calendar. The thing that you should really pay attention to is March 28. That's our final presentation. And you'll see that that's only a couple of days before the state actually has to adopt their budget. Will it be adopted on that time? It's, it's supposed to be through our state constitution, but their laws that they've made are not always followed by the law, by the lawmakers that make them. So I, I hope that, you know, we get some type of state aid runs shortly, so that our, our business officials can try to develop a budget the best, best they can, so that we're able to meet the needs of this community and the communities that are neighboring. Board members, anything else? I know trustee crap, you had something.
People before expressed thoughts about getting a BOSI tour. And I talked to Mike, his last name, but.
Weinro.
Wyro, that's right. And he said that anytime our board would like to come up there, we can set a date. If you would like it in the morning, it's open to, and it's only going to be Wilson administrators and board. We'll be on a private tour, I guess. You know, I went on the one last year. It was pretty, pretty interesting, and they've got a lot of new areas that they're exploring up there. So I, I'd just like to get a feel of how everybody would like. I'm looking at somewhere, probably next week would be too soon, but I'm looking somewhere around the 6th to the 7th, or the March of, no, February. Whoops, I'm in a long month here. Thank you, sir. It would, yeah, again, it's the 6th or 7th, or the 13th or 14th of February. I don't know, anybody has any choices on them, or who can be available, or?
I do look at the 6th.
How does the 6th sound?
Seven.
No, I accept the 6th.
You said it's not the 6th.
Oh, how about 7th?
Just look. If, if, I'd like to be there, but those two days are not, the following week is better, like the Monday, the 13th.
Let's look at 14th.
13th is better.
Okay, we have a board meeting on the 14th. Does that matter?
No, we, we're looking at the 13th, if that.
13th would be on Monday.
Yeah, we'd rather do that. I think we're, at least this side of the table seems free.
13th. Anything else down there?
I'll try.
All right, I'll plan it for 8:30. How would that be?
Sure.
And if you want to contact the opening principals, Mr. Butler, Mr. Gudlevich, they're more than welcome.
I, I will introduce, I will do that also. And if, when you confirm with Mr. Weinro, I would just ask that you also let him know we may bring some staff member along with him.
I, I'm sure it's not a problem. They're very accommodating, so.
I think it's important for some of our staff, specifically at the high school, to see some of the programs that are being offered at the BOSI, things like that. So if we have the ability, I, I'd like to offer it if they'd like to come, you know, if I can do four or five, that would be great. Well, depending on how many subs I can get.
And then that's Monday, March 13, 8:30 AM.
That actually doesn't work for me. I, sorry, if it works for everyone else, I totally understand, but.
I'm screwed up here.
RJ's the only one that seems like it doesn't work for right now.
Yeah, if that's all right, I can, I can see if I can shovel some things around. But right now, at least, I would be out for them.
And I, I do know, and at the last CSO meeting, I wasn't there, that's the chief school officers meeting, Dr. Godchow, the previous one had mentioned he was going to try doing one of those where all the districts are invited. So there might be another opportunity too.
Yeah, we're looking at later in the year for that one. Okay, this one will be just for Wilson.
I would also suggest that you invite your junior president, she would be elementary. That would give the elementary representative.
I plan on giving her the ability to pick whoever she wanted to, so.
Well, if it were.
I, I would offer for her to pick who she would want to bring. And if, and if she chooses her executive committee, if she chooses herself and two other people, I would be.
I think it would be wonderful if elementary teachers also know what to do.
Yep.
And I will confirm with Mr. Wyro, and I'll get back to you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, trustee Krap, for setting that up. Board members, anything else? I will open up to public forum. If anybody would like to address the board, please state your name and address prior and keep your comments brief. It's your time to shine. See, see, no movement, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Take care from going home.